Wasn't prepared for this, yes. Reorganization, thank you. Alright, so I'll take over reorganization. I'm looking for nominations for Chair. We have a first and second for Carrie. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close nominations. All those in favor? You accept. You are Chair.
But who's the second? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so I sent you all a list and if you go through it, we can just like take some time to talk about it. First one I have is Secretary and officially, there's not much Secretary does. I think it would be nice to establish President of the Secretary and the Clerk of the Committee and taking minutes. Minutes are not actually that hard because you get a template and you just kind of have to fill in pieces. And I am happy to walk in and answer that. And it has been doing being Vice Chair and doing this, thank you, I appreciate it. If anyone else wants a chair.
I would be open to the role. Want to do it?
Yes, yeah. Okay, alright, so from here on out, I just point everyone. So I, well, for that role, the Frontier Rep. Area, yeah. So it's a, put it up for the conversation, I will point Mary to that role. Union thirty-eight voting members, we have three. Functionally, we have not actually been using them, but officially, the role is when we have a joint meeting, they are the three members of our committee who are voting. But we do still have to, like, so, does anybody want to do that? Just like a joint meeting? Yeah. Yeah, so it functionally has, that's actually something I would specify to the Speaker or Stephen. Yeah, okay. I will do it too.
Do you want to be different than Mary? Because she's already like a representative.
I actually don't think it does because of Bob Hollins.
Can Mary be the Union thirty-eight voting rep while she's the Frontier rep?
It's when you're voting for the Union thirty-eight thing, so.
They have to because there are only three of them. You don't want to do that because you get more votes at the town of Deerfield if you don't split it up. So let's say we were voting to kick you out of the Union, okay? You would have a vote on Deerfield, all your three votes in Deerfield, and you'd have your vote. Although you'd still have the vote on Frontier too, that they would vote separately. So I guess it doesn't matter. It rarely comes up.
Okay, alright, so I'll put myself, all the points, A and A in myself.
They have voted before. There is a reason, we, some, I don't want to sound like I'm nuts. Some committees have purposely done that to make sure that the Frontier Rep is not the person who is whatever, so that you have, if it's an all over, if it's a majority vote, you get one more vote. I don't know when it would come up, especially as we restructure how the superintendent is selected. I don't know how, when it would come up, but.
Negotiations team? Shouldn't be that senior this year. What should we talk about? Any minutes from that? I would do it. Okay, I'll point myself. Alright, the Capital Improvements Planning Committee. This is going to capital improvements meetings, there's a queue in the fall and then several in the spring. And I've been waiting on behalf of the schools, capital requests, and also considering the happenings. I'll take everything tonight. Thank you, Mary.
Question, so what does that look like with the paper?
So, this year, the first batch of $200,000 was approved by County Holders Committee and, um, on the front. Going forward, there may be more that we can request, but does the bond that you were, that this happens turnaround for the global future?
And the, the work doesn't have to be approved by the town. It's just the committee that approves the funding to go on warrants.
Yeah, it's really, they're just making recommendations for a town.
We oversee any of the projects that actually get approved.
That's right.
It does, I mean, I would be interested in it, but looking at the role of Secretary, I think everyone could, plus Mary.
So, Mary? Yeah. Collaborative rep, so this is pretty continued. And also, see if somebody's, um, so. Not very good, so maybe you guys. Policy Review Committee. Secretly Bank Committee, so that's, can we structure a little, there'll be one representative from our committee and one representative. Thank you for that. This is, the time limit is not that much, it's maybe a handful of meetings a year and like.
Yeah, I, I would recommend, as we started putting it together, the one thing is, it, it would be great to have a person assigned and then have a backup. If every committee did that, then we can, the hardest part is trying to get, you know, eight people together. But we, we think, we, we, I'm looking over at Lisa over there. We met and discussed it because we're wondering, is it too cumbersome? It was, it's necessary to have all those people there. We agreed afterwards, so if you could have a primary and then a vice, you know, that would be great.
Okay. Okay, and then I also want to talk about the role of the representative to the Connecting Community Initiative. This is a Deerfield organization that brings together one member from each of the town's boards and committees groups. And every six weeks or so, they have a meeting where everyone just gets like very informed what's going on. And it's a good way to keep the different parts of town on what's going on, other communication that are. I have done that for the past several months. I think it's probably a good fit for the Chair to do it, just because they see all the negotiations coming through. I don't mind doing it unless someone else wanted to. It's a good way to like, if you want to go around town and get involved with community stuff. And also, I would be happy to do it. Great job. Thus concludes reorganization. Thank you, everyone. Next up, they're going to the Origin of Prisons of March fifth and March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Two different things, so, March fifth. Second? All in favor?
Okay, so I emailed you out the expense reports, which were through April thirtieth. If you're looking through that closely, you'll see there are a lot of line items with significant amounts of money available. As per usual, we've had vacancies in IA positions. We've had unpaid leaves of absences. We had a teacher vacancy at one point that recently filled, but it freed up probably almost $100,000 worth of funding between teachers and IAs. This is typical for Deerfield, it's usually where we sort of get our savings and then our end of year spending money from. But there were other lines as well, the substitute line is well underspent. There was still some teacher PD money available. Some of our software lines did not fully get spent down because the curriculum director and the IT director have been working to consolidate and refine what we're using for software in the classrooms to make sure that we're using them to their capabilities. And if we're not, like, let's close out those subscriptions. So we had some funds available there as well. And then sick buyback, Deerfield holds a placeholder for that, but we had a small retirement payout in twenty-five, so those funds are available as well. So, we're still working to spend down. Tina had discretion on the budget, actually until tomorrow at the end of the day, to spend available budget lines. And then requests were put out to all of the staff in the building to see what we had for needs. We've made some purchases of furniture, storage cabinets. We're working on some bigger quote items for replacing the mats that go along the gym walls. And then the sound system and projector system that's in the cafeteria and for presentations and to have parents in the building and whatnot. So those are some of the bigger things that we're working on. One thing that I am going to capture funds for at all five schools is the overage that results from the contracts. So, budget was settled before contracts were finalized, we had placeholders in, but the placeholder was less than what we ended up settling at. I personally still feel really good about where we landed and I'm glad for the work that we did and that the committee put in to make what feels like fair and equitable contracts for teachers and IAs. But it is going to come with some natural consequence. We'll be okay in Deerfield, especially next year. We already know we have one leave of absence coming, so that'll have salary savings again. The retirement buyout is small for next year as well, and then we'll be able to save some funds from this year. So I'm not concerned in twenty-six about a budget problem. I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible with our money to make sure that we can cover the overages. And not just for the general fund, because some of our teachers are paid from early childhood revolving or other grants. And those are seeing impact as well, so we're going to try to offset that impact with some savings where we can from this year. Without, like, closing spending, like, if Tina said, we really need this, we have plenty of money to make those kind of purchases still too. Twenty-seven might be a different conversation, where we have to look how we creatively cover everything to meet contractual obligations. But I'm not overly concerned about Deerfield at this point. Any questions about any of that or the budget report before I just state the warrant amount?
Yeah, wouldn't you say, looking ahead at early childhood revolving funds going down, is that a finding for me?
No, not about revenue going down, about the impact of the contract on the funds. So if, you know, we had budgeted $26,000 for an IA and with the new contract, the pay is $30,000. It's going to take $4,000 of their savings because they're not going to have $4,000 in new revenue to help cover that. So, I'm going to try to take some of our savings from this year to help offset the loss. Does that make sense?
Nice question about this line, and my question to Tina, is that below budget because people haven't been out or because we don't have ourselves?
All of that.
So we're feeling, we're moving staff around, so.
And that's pretty typical in this building for multiple years, that, you know, Tina reallocate staff because we don't have enough to cover. This is the largest building outside of Frontier with the most IAs and teachers. Some of the other schools that are much smaller have like one or two people that they call upon all the time. We really haven't established that here in the same level.
We have like three or four people that will show up daily, but that's it. And we have, on average, ten to twelve staff out.
Any other questions about this here?
Well, interestingly enough on that, just, I was on a call today with the Commissioner. Well, not the Commissioner, but the Secretary of Education, because Commissioner hasn't started yet. And they have collected, and I look over at Lisa, I can't believe MTA allowed it, but they are going to probably release teacher attendance by school. And administrative attendance by school. And so, I think, you know, I had some pretty pointed questions on it, they didn't answer. The big one, you type them in, but like, how does that work in a school where there's 12 teachers and one principal? You're releasing, they didn't answer any of the questions, so. I'm surprised that they're, I mean, and I don't know how that's going to work. I'll use, you know, even Deerfield being a little bit larger, but you have two people on maternity, those are all considered absences, that's how we track them. We don't say it's absence excuse like you're in high school. High school meaning a kid, you know, teacher. You know what I mean? So I don't know how that's going to all shoot out. So they're supposed to send me a report in the next month about what it's going to look like looking at last year's numbers. And then they're going, if the new Commissioner agrees when he starts in July, they're going to release the other numbers in the fall.
Where is the drive for that?
What's that? They are pushing that, a, one of the major losses in education, there are two things that they were pushing on in the previous, under Russell Johnston, was that students being absent from school is one of the number one loss of learning. And the second item is that teachers being absent from school is the second reason for loss of learning. And that they saw that, and you can look at the data, which is true, I mean, you don't have a teacher in front of the student, that's the, that's one of the greatest things that, problems you can have. That you, coming out of COVID, direct correlation, teachers in the classroom working with students versus none and that kind of thing. And so, I don't know where it fits into how it battles with the MTA. You know, I don't know if there's, I don't know what the politics are there at that level. Like, is it, is it politics there or are they just trying to show data? And data is just data, but data is politics, so when you release it like that. So, just like, MCAT scores are politics, you know what I mean? Like, you can say they're not, but they are in a way. And so, yeah, I'm just going to, it was brought up today, I was, they had been talking about it, but I didn't think they were moving forward. Or, I thought there was going to be some resistance. Maybe there still will be, maybe the new Commissioner won't do it, but, I don't know.
Just a point of clarification, there's not 12 teachers out there, that's a staff as a whole.
Yeah, 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 there'd be a lot of teachers out there, yeah, staff. But anyway, it's just, we'll see, there'll be.
The only other thing, Carrie, that I have is to state the warrants, just for the record. There were 36 signed electronically, not since the last meeting, but since the last report, because we didn't report finances during the joint meeting. So those 36 warrants totaled $330,109.77.
Michelle? Principal's report. So I won't go over it in detail because most of my principal report goes out in the parent square email that you all get, or will be. But I do want to just say that we're introducing our new theme for next year, you know, we've had You Are Loved, You Belong Here, and now we're doing a community. Love a good theme. And that's where you get your mugs. And that was, teachers, we see those on teacher issues. And your tip away. Thank you. Next up, Leo, couple comments?
So, Miss Taylor, Special Education Teacher here at Deerfield and the President of the Union thirty-eight Association and currently Chair of the bargaining team. And I just wanted to take a moment to share some thoughts that are last round of bargaining. And although it's challenging at times, I think on both sides, we are, our team members, we help her. We appreciate everyone's willingness to work together, should create contracts of value, we respect all of our members. The teacher contract passed unanimously, with people sharing that this was the best contract that they had received in many cycles. The RA contract passed by over ninety percent of all of their members, voting in favor. And they also were excited that the content of their contract became closer to that voting rate. We know that with all the contracts that are, the negotiations in our area, that some of them could be contentious. And we feel fortunate that we worked well together and it was not a big problem.
I think part of the reason Deerfield and our district is strong is because of the way we use the staff and they're also very capable to negotiate. There's none also there.
No one's out there.
Okay, next up, unfinished business, conversation on regionalization, tuning up for a special conversation.
So, yeah, I mean, it was a, as we got the presentation from Russ Dupree at our last meeting regarding regionalization, what kind of really stuck out to me was, I think the first step that we should look at is whether or not it's feasible, economically feasible. Like, could it even happen? There is the number one, very quickly, someone can just throw these numbers at the table that, that kind of sinks the ship, and one of them being health insurance. And so, my recommended, just kind of jumping to, we can also talk about what people thought about it and that kind of thing, but that's why I put it on here. But I'm asking to get the school committee behind having the administration move forward to do some number diving to see what does it look like using, using envelope numbers, could it be possible, right? And what are the big barriers for a full regionalization? You know, when we talk about, oh, insurance is going to cost, well, how much does it really cost based on this year's numbers? You know, it would be dumping some of this onto Shelley, who does, how we have a very full plate, but it also, we could also, if there's other, you know, if we had to bring in somebody else, and I'm not talking about paying a lot of money, but bringing in other people that can help out with that, we could do that as well. But just kind of come up with a general thing and doing it from now until, you know, maybe the first quarter of next year, to try to come up with a plan. A report to give the committee about, like, this is what we found as challenging. Do we want to then move forward and create a regionalization subcommittee to then start going into the work? But I really think we have to answer that financial question, we have to get that data no matter what. And if it's really impossible, I know there's a, people, people talk about, we tried this before, it's impossible. We have to be able to get some of that information before we can have any kind of, because we don't have a financial crisis in our towns, I use the word crisis, there's always financial ups and downs. You're not going to have motivation to regionalize unless we can kind of show that we can do it. So, anyway, that's how I'm, I think the next step we should take, kind of in the curiosity of the finances.
So what does that look like? What's that pre-committee for? Is that what you guys picking out data points for trying to like consolidate into something that we can even understand?
Yep, so Shelley would probably be the first thing we would do is look at what is the general cost of, let's say Deerfield that, you know, what's their percentage of, at healthcare, what's the current cost? And what does it cost you make it eighty percent, which is Frontier? Because while Frontier could be negotiated down, realistically, negotiations, you're going to have to give something up, which would probably be, there's nowhere to go with it because you can't raise salaries to, you have to raise the salaries of other people else, you know what I mean? You can't decrease work hours where, you know, we don't have any wiggle room there, you know? So, if you give up a benefit, you have to give something. And so, realistically, you're bringing that number up, so.
I also think some of the other preliminary work is like behind the scenes of what happens with Chapter Seventy? What happens with early, if we're regionalized? Does that all become one pot of money? Ross talked about how the towns can maintain autonomy of their own budget, but like, what does that really look like? I want to have those questions answered as well before we go to.
And we can just go do it, but it's more, I think it's more important that the committee is behind, you know, is, we have this discussion here and the committee's interested. And if the committee has no interest in it, we should, that should be part of the discussion here as well. And I've said this, and, you know, this is one of those things that, because I have the meeting, you know, five times, like, this is the group to do it with. You have a stable, more than stable business manager, you have a stable superintendent right now. You have people with history and knowledge of the towns and that kind of thing. My principals are all, our principals are all veterans, like, there's not a lot of turmoil, really stable. So if we're going to take a venture down this path to take a look around, you're doing, you're doing it in a very stable time. You know, if you're having turnover and that kind of stuff, it just causes more spice to the mix, I guess.
Totally factor in in the number of hours, that you have to go to five meetings to say the thing.
Yeah, right, right.
With the folks are doing that versus like other, you know, and I'm sure you're still doing your job, but like, how much greater could the job be? Things like that was not part of your lifetime, or.
Well, that's right, we kind of go into this, this quieter season as we leave, whatever, but, you know, Shelley has, I said this at the last school committee meeting, Shelley's about to do end of year budgets. She, uh, to the state, five separate ones. It just, it's like, the first, I, I know Shelley can tell you, we've talked about this, how it's a pain, but this is one of those things where it's like, the first year and second year you get through it, the numbers are so new, then after a while, it's like, was I talking about Wheatley? Was I talking about Deerfield, you know what I mean? And, yeah, it's so, it's a.
And the state doesn't even understand.
The state doesn't understand.
We'll get emails that say, can you send us this data for your district? Okay, which one do you want?
Yeah, I had a, I had a call, the call from the state, like, a couple days ago regarding alt assessment, and we were forced to sign off on an insurance thing, assurance thing. And I said, am I, which one am I missing? They go, you were missing yours. I go, which one? And so they're like, what do you mean? And like, I have four districts, he's like, oh, you're one of those districts, and I'm like, yeah. So you had to go through every single one, and, you know, you know, we were missing two, we had filed three, and I don't know, you know, those kind of things. It's like, I don't know, did we click the button or not click the button? Because I literally, when I go through it, click, 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 submit, click, 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 change school, submit. You know, so, and they don't, you know, when they tell us we're missing things, they don't tell us what school. It's always funny. Yes, but I don't think that to convince people that it's worth looking at. Remember we, it was with, we got that $25,000 grant, and Marty was principal. So that's 10 years. That's 15 years, Mary. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think it, my gut says that the information's going to be sobering and that it's not going to be like, I mean, we also, Sunderland is now using a different insurance company than the other three towns, so they would have to change back to the other, change to another insurance. There's a lot of obstacles ahead, and I don't know, you know, that's kind of when I asked Russ, when he was saying, I go, because I always in my mind, it's a meeting matching Frontier in one swoop. And also, I remember 15 years ago, it was probably the greatest discrepancy between the elementary contract and the Frontier contract. And now they're very similar, like, they cross, they, we, they kind of go in and out. But I think that, I was kind of thinking in the minds, I had the mindset of having two districts, having an elementary and having a secondary. And, I mean, because a lot of our business deal, I mean, I, I've only worked in kind of this kind of setup, so I don't know, like, you, you put, one minute you're talking about kindergarten, next minute you're talking about graduation. It's a, you know, it's a big span to cover, and maybe you do with two, you go to two regions, and then 20 years from now, they can bring the two regions together.
And I do think we should push Russ a little bit on that, because he said, I don't think Dacia would like it, but there are some structured like that. And I think that's one of the other preliminary things that we can look into. This isn't going to be about cost savings, because it is going to cost more if we do it. It's going to be about functionality of the school and how we provide the best education for the students. So right now, if Deerfield has a specialized program and Sunderland has a student that would benefit from that program, Sunderland has to pay Deerfield to come in and receive services. Like, we could create special ed, early childhood. Like, we could create special ed, early childhood, cafeteria, custodial, right now, Conway's custodian was out. We can't send someone else within district, because if they're a Deerfield employee and get hurt in Conway, they have no workers' comp insurance. Like, there's so many layers that how we work is broken, that could be helpful to staff, students, and families, that we're gonna have to spin it in that direction if that's really where we want to go. It's not gonna be about saving money, because we're not in financial crisis, we're not doing it to save any time. Because no one's gonna close their elementary school, which I don't think we need to do anyway, but.
I mean, enrollment and teacher prep programs are down, it's hard to find related service providers. So, all of that, if you're, you know, for district, it doesn't, so like, you could be, like, to a point where one another can hire folks on person, because the latest service providers can, can choose wherever they want to go, because they're in such high demands.
Even along those lines, like, Wheatley doesn't need a full-time physical therapist, but they might need a PTA to meet some IEP needs. But that PTA can't work in that building without a supervised physical therapist. So then we have to hire, like, somebody to work a couple of hours a week. It's just, it, it could be so much.
And then they get a paycheck from the town of Wheatley, they get a paycheck from the town of Deerfield, and they put them all together and they go to the bank and they submit each one.
It, it could be a really great thing, it's just we're gonna have to sell it on something.
It's gonna be hard to, most things they sell is by building a building. You know, and so, most regionalizations are sold by building a building. You know what I mean? We need to come together so that we can get this new shiny thing. But it's gonna be, I mean, when you look down the road, that's the hard part, it's gonna be hard to say, hey, we want you to pay a little bit more. It's gonna be hard to sell.
Sitting in that room first time, it felt like the daunting nature of it, the complexities of it, really pretending to challenge us long-term. But, A, it doesn't hurt to do some feasibility work. And B, if there are alternative approaches to it, say it's not this, this one uniform solution for the high school and the elementary schools, but if there's Wheatley can grant job, things like, like, use some creative problem solving, like, what looking for?
And, and as I also said at the other meeting, you can look to the north of us, there, you know, there are six towns talking about a new regional agreement. So it'll be interesting, that'll get people talking about, is like, you know, it'll be, they'll be talking the air about it, if that one takes off, it might, so. Because they have huge enrollment problems.
I mean, is it, is it possible for them to look at some measures instead, in the interim? Because it, because we're looking at a big picture solution to a media problem. And so, are, what ideas have been brought forward with the normalism of the media issue? For the workload, the meeting load, as well as some of the more internal staff issues and hiring issues that you're just referencing. Is it possible that we bring on another member for your office? In that way, is there an opportunity to look in that direction and advocate for that?
Yeah.
I don't know, it just seems like we're looking at a four or five-year project to make this regionalization possible, but in that time, your work's not gonna get as well.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good idea, we're trying to come up with new plans, I mean, obviously, the school committee calendar next year has some adjustments to it, but still. Yeah, it's still, I don't know, if I, if I have an idea, I'll do it, I'll take it, you know, so, yeah, yeah.
It certainly seems to me that we have responsibility to explore this now, when we're, before we go further exploring, we can reach the numbers. Yeah, I would say support whatever we do or.
Okay, we'll do it.
If there's no other conversation on that, moving on to business, we're going to approve the settlement agreements between family group, Sunderland, Wheatley School Districts, and the U38, if you can start with the support personnel for 2025 and 2028 contracts.
So, we should go to executive session for that.
Discuss it and then come back to vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what I would recommend is go through all your reports, so that, because they'll get all in one recording, and then we'll put it at the end. I know Lisa said you want to come back to hear it anyways, she'll be in the room, but, because then we'll, then we'll leave, go to executive session, then come back into regular session to vote, if that makes sense, but get all the business done, so it's just easy, it'll be easier on us too, because it may be a long conversation.
Okay, all right, moving to reports. Carrie has no report. Flavre?
I would have not met since March, really, again, next week, it was the first meeting since the fall of last winter. So a lot of staff were there, they were very busy, they were very comfortable. And I believe, so the, oh, the leader, what do you think of the person?
Exactly.
The director, thank you. Is, is now doing video blogs and email updates to try to reassure the staff. I'm not sure the staff is feeling reassured, especially since the most recent report came out again about the year's funding to be implemented. Next year, they're trying, the thing that most immediately affects us is they are increasing 40 cents a student, which ends up being, I'm bringing in your, like, I have left four total for the whole year, which seems reasonable. So, I have that, I have the report, I just haven't shared it yet, but I was like, what up? It feels like the collaborative has had a little, I think it needs to do a lot of thinking and organizing. Potentially might not be able to. They just don't have to, they just, they cannot keep up with.
I think the park and Hickey, especially for.
Yeah, I sent that out to you today, the, you know, some of the highlights of it is, we did hire our new early, Director of Early Child, Maren Law. And she will start with us in July and do some crossover dates with Kim McCarthy, who's retiring at the end of the school year in June, so welcome aboard to her. I've started the, those questions that were brought up regarding Karen Parentino's evaluation, is the Director of Student Services, while she works for the school committee, I have not been regularly evaluating her, so I've started that process and now moving to the next school year. Strategic plan, if anybody wanted to do a spot analysis of that and hasn't done it, it's still open. And then AI in our schools is gonna be one of our big topics that we're gonna, I just kind of mentioned that we have summer workshops where the administrative team gets together and works on things, and one of them is going to be AI, and there's gonna be policies on that, that will be brought forward in the fall, and then probably some planning about how to get teachers involved with where does AI begin and end? In the classroom and in, in education, it's a, I'm sure we'll be talking about it for many, many years to come, but kind of, we haven't formally really tackled it. And then the last part, you can kind of look through, it's just a summary of where the budgets are, the Senate starts on the 20th debate, the budget. So, just kind of gives you an idea where people are landing, there's nothing crazy going on in it, so, it's kind of, so, that's where I'm at.
Thank you for sending that up. All right. There's no other business here? So, I have the promotion to enter executive session?
So you need to state why you're going in.
To discuss, I have a perspective on the bargaining for the person.
And then you have to, and then you have to roll call.
Carrie, if you want to just second?
Me.
Second, you have a second, all right.
Type and talk at the same time.
It's a little loud, and now I'm calling out people.
Oh, yes.
Yes, Carrie, yes, Mary?
Yeah.
Well, any?